All right. Good evening. I am calling to order the July 9, 2024 Fountain City Council Agenda. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Estes? Councilmember Hersberg?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have six members present, and Councilmember Estes notified staff of her absence this evening.
Thank you very much. On that note, I would like to take a moment before we begin our meeting and do a moment of silence for two people. Councilmember Estes is not here because she lost her mother last week. And there was a service today for Officer Johnny Rowe, who's a former Fountain PD police officer. So if you would please join me in a moment of silence for their families and what they're going through. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, on that note, one other thing. The elections were our last meeting. Everybody was chomping at the bit to get out of here, so I'd like to congratulate everybody who ran and put their name out there. And we do have two people up here who will be running for county commissioner. So congratulations to Councilmember Applegate and Councilmember Duncan. So thank you very much. I do want to remind people, though, the business inside City Hall is Running City. So if you want to talk to them about their campaigns, I'm sure they have lots of social media and stuff out there and ways for you to contact them outside this meeting. So, alrighty. And that takes us on to item 4.1, Presentations. We have none tonight. Item 4.2, Board Commission and Committee Appointments. We have none tonight. Item number five, Correspondence, Comments, and Ex officio Reports. Mr. Trainer?
I don't have any comments, Madam Mayor.
Whoa, wait a minute. Whew, okay. Whoa.
Three. Nothing.
Everything's good at the FD.
All right.
Break the streak. I will. Very quickly, Madam Mayor, evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the recognition of Johnny Rowe. That was what I was going to mention. Attended the funeral today along with two members of the Fountain Fire Department's honor guard. It was a great, short ceremony outside at the Pike's Peak Memorial Cemetery. And I wanted to thank Al for escorting the Blue Knights and Johnny's urn up to the gravesite. So it was a good ceremony. Thanks, Al.
You'll have enough later on, huh? Okay. All right. Anybody in the back row have anything? City Clerk?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Or an IT?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay. Any councilmembers on my left have anything tonight? No? Okay. Anybody on the right? Councilmember? Councilmember? Yeah.
Sure. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today, there was a resolution presented at the County Commissioner's Office on budgeted matters for organizations to receive community development. It's called the CDBG funds. And you know, when Fountain is mentioned, my radar goes up. So we have Councilperson Estes and Todd on that subcommittee. And they are giving us funds for, to be considered for the Bonita Drive sidewalk improvement on Phase Two here in Fountain, and that's $148,000 that was recommended. So I am happy that our city was included on the budget proposal to get funding for additional accessibility upgrades to improve pre-existing sidewalks in Fountain. So that was awesome to hear today. I also attended the Water in the Pike's Peak Region, Colorado Springs Utilities. They gave its 2023 annual report, and they had a panel discussion on the future of water in the Pike's Peak region. And, you know, there has been remarkable laws in the nation. The Colorado River is over-allocated and has been for many years. So our water problem just didn't get started. There is a water supply challenge, and everyone has the same needs all over Colorado. So we know that car washes use a lot of water in here in Fountain. I don't think we'll be getting any more car washes, Todd says. No. Scott says, no, no more car washes. So I just wanted to say, you know, it was great information. Great to hear that they are, there's a lot of infrastructure work going on on the horizon. I know water issue is a big thing that's going on in everyone's mind, so it is being attended to on all across the board. I'm doing Cliff Notes, as my colleague says, do Cliff Notes today. I just want to also say a special thank you to the men and women in blue and our first responders who were working to keep us safe for the Fourth of July weekend. You know, they were out while we were at home listening to the boom-boom. That's what I told my dog. I was at home with me and my dog this weekend, so for the Fourth, and, you know, it went on for hours and hours. And I even texted Chief, he was out of town. So, you know, just thank you for that. I also attended the Colorado Springs Wildfire Ready, and the title of the meeting was "Wildfire Is Coming Plan." And they talked a lot about the wildfire threat that's in our community, preparing our homes for wildfire, emergency notification system, emergency and evacuation plans, and fire and police response to wildfires. So I would like for us to do something like that here. It was great information. They even had bags that you can get for drawings, and they had emergency radio and kits and those. They made it real fun. So they had a lot of information, and I'll share that with you later in this week. And I also attended the E911, and our fire chief was there and was a pleasant surprise. I forgot he was on the board, but I learned about their GIS system, and that stands for Geographical Information Services. And they assist with road naming, and then they work with developers. There was something that I didn't know that happened. They do a lot of public education in our schools, and they do, they provide peak alerts, and they provide alerts in all different languages. Lot of things that they talked about that I didn't know. So great, you know, we learn every day. And they also talked about House Bill 21-1110, which is the Colorado laws for persons with disabilities. And this act directs each state agency on and before July 2022, July 1, 2022, to submit its written accessibility plan to the office. And I know that we have, we're working on that, right? And so as long as we have, we're able to show that we are meeting the needs and getting in compliance, then we're in compliance. So great to hear that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Yeah, I also went to the El Parmar, what they, what they kind of tagged as a regional water event. But I hope next year they put a little bit more emphasis on regional and not just Colorado Springs Utility Water. So while it was interesting, I was wish, I was thinking it's going to be more regional is probably why we both went, right? Yeah. And, and I would like to congratulate WT's Military Cuts. She had a grand opening for her new location here in town this week. And I know she's worked really hard, and that's been a dream of hers for years. And so congratulations to her and her ribbon cutting. And with that, we will go on to item six, Public to Be Heard. If you are wanting to say something tonight and you have not filled out one of these white cards, please take all of the other people in line ahead. You are doing their time to be heard. Please grab a card in the back and fill it out and pass it up to one of the staff over here. We'll get it up here. Otherwise, I'm going to go through the cards in the order that I received them. So I have Aaron Heim's VFW 6461. If you could just use the mic right here in the middle, please. Thank you. I know, we just try to.
It's shorter. I'm Aaron Heim's with the commander of VFW 6461. Just wanted to highlight a few things that we've done over the last couple of weeks. And then what we have coming up are the next month. We participated in the Security Fire Department Pancake Breakfast on the Fourth of July, conducted a poppy drive out there. And then also, more importantly for us, we passed out a little over 100 scholarship applications to high schoolers and middle schoolers that were present. We also, over the last three weeks, donated a little bit, over $2,500, to four veterans, one to help avoid eviction, and then two others just needed lodging for about four or five nights each. So trying to, trying to get back out in the community as we raise a little bit more money. And then lastly, this last Sunday, I want to thank Al for coming down and participating in Officer Rose Memorial Breakfast down at the post. Had a lot of family out there providing support for Angie, Officer Rose's widow. Great family spent a lot of time down with us. Looking forward, this Friday, we have our Steak Night down at the post. Next Friday, we're going to do a Casino Night. So it'll be kind of an hors d'oeuvre dinner on Casino Night. Come in, they're going to pass out chips. And then at the end of the night, whoever has the most chips wins prizes from the canteen. And then next Saturday, we have live music with the Austin Ross Band. And then we're going to try something new down at the post. We're going to try Music Bingo. So we're going to do Music Bingo on the 23rd and the 30th, just to see, you know, if we can garner some support for that. Just something new to do down here in town. Give people options. And then kind of our recurring events, every Monday at 6:30, we have trivia. Getting a pretty good following there. We had about eight teams there last night. I think they take more pride in harassing me as I do trivia than they do actually answering the questions. But it is what it is. And then every Wednesday, we do our bingo, and then Fridays, we have karaoke. Do want to highlight a couple of things that are coming up early next month. We have our first annual barbecue competition, so we're going to start that on Friday, the 9th. We're going to open our gates at 6:00 PM, get the competitors in the back, let them start their food. And then the judging is going to actually occur on the 10th at noon as part of our annual picnic, which we invite the community down, come enjoy, pony rides, raffles, cornhole. We're going to have two bands out there, Ranger Station from 1 to 4 and Rebel Kitty from 6 to 9. So really, just trying to get people in there. If you, if you like to barbecue, come down. We're going to do brisket ribs, pulled pork, chicken, and then a wildcard event. You can enter one or all, it doesn't matter. It's all free. And then lastly, just want to highlight, we kind of, we kind of made a little bit of a mistake on our part. We, we overbooked ourselves on Labor Day. So Labor Day, Monday, the VFW is going to be sponsoring a 5K walk run down at Fountain Regional Park. All the proceeds from that, we're donating to Wounded Warriors Carry Forward Project. Our goal is to raise $10,000. Right now, we're sitting at about $2,000 to participate. We're asking the community to just come out. There's no fee to participate. We're just asking you to donate something, and then 100% of the proceeds are going to go to Wounded Warrior. We're going to follow that up with our auxiliary participating in the parade. And then we're going to be down at the Fall Festival with a booth co-hosted with Legion 38, just really trying to educate people on some of the veteran services here within the town. And then lastly, we also have a Veteran Resource Fair at our post that we're going to drive people down to. Right now, we have participation from Remount Foundation, Mount Carmel, Next Chapter, Rocky Mountain Human Services, Homes for All Veterans, K9 Service Companions, one of the newer service dog organizations here in town. Sports Quips is going to be doing the free haircuts. And then we're going to have VSOs out there to sign people up for benefits if they need it. So we're going to be real busy over the next six to eight weeks. Any questions?
No, thank you very much, but thank you for all those activities. The Veterans Resource Fair, is that on Labor Day also?
Yes, that's on Labor Day. We, we kind of made the mistake because we didn't, we didn't see the parade on the calendar. We saw the Fall Festival, so we just kind of overbooked ourselves a little bit, but we'll make it work.
Okay. Maybe come in, come in cohorts from other Legions or, you know, other VFWs, right? All right. Thank you so much. That sounds like a lot of fun stuff. Okay, my next card is Eric Farrar. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Friend, you want to talk about Ventana South Construction Approval? Welcome, and please state your name for the record.
Hi, Eric Farrar. I am on the Board of Directors for the Ventana Metropolitan District. We are facing some serious budget issues within the Metropolitan District that are based on anticipated revenue from the sales of homes in the next filing in the Ventana community. The applications for approval to commence construction have been delayed for over a year now. Responses to each of these submittals has taken 24 weeks to get the first response. After answering the questions and resubmitting, it took 10 weeks after that to get a response, seven weeks. And we're going on more than three weeks for the fourth submittal. So for over a year, we've been anticipating these, the next filing and the revenues from that to sustain the operations of the Metropolitan District. We're facing a significant shortfall if construction does not resume. Construction for all the previous phases have gone very smoothly. They've gone quickly. Filings have followed one after another for over six years now. This is the first filing in about eight years that has faced these types of delays. Like to know if there's any chance of these filings getting approved anytime in the near future and some explanation as to why it is taking so long to make these happen.
I'm going to throw that over to Mr. Evans, who's head of our planning department. If you don't feel comfortable answering it tonight, I'm sure he'd be happy to have a meeting with you.
Sure. Eric, I'm happy to give you some short and sweet answers, and then I'm happy to connect with you and give you kind of the long story. Combination of things that have come into effect. There was some smittles on Challenger Homes part. There was some issues with they wanted to build some utility easements underneath sidewalks, and we made them redo those again. So there's several different things that have occurred. But the long and short of it, that's the reason not only that project, but all of our projects are delayed right now, is our lack of staffing in our planning department. We've had a couple of openings that are open for over a year. So we're dependent right now on one staff member to get all of the 51, 52 projects that we've currently got. And just today, I had three. And just today, I had three more meetings with new projects that want to come in as well. So that's kind of the short and sweet. It's an industry-wide problem. We're not doing good. There's no excuse for the delays. But I can tell you, we're doing better than Monument, who put a moratorium on any new development coming in in January. So we're gonna keep showing our appreciation to Christie to keep things moving. But I'll come back, I'll give you a card and then you and I can connect on some of the specifics, okay?
And there's, there are some details that I can't disclose publicly yet that might be of interest to you on that as well.
Yep. Happy to do that. I'll come back, give you a card.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate it. Our next card is from Daniel Brown and he would like to talk about code enforcement and planning. Mr. Brown, if you could come down the center mic and state your name for the record, please.
My name's Daniel Brown. I just have a couple of quick questions for you. Who is in charge of code enforcement? Who is in charge of code enforcement?
Lucia Tingley. She's our Neighborhood Services Director.
What was that name again?
Lucia Tingley.
Thank you. And who is in charge of the Planning Department here in Fountain?
Todd Evans.
Mr. Evans, who just walked out in the lobby, yes.
Thank you. I will touch base if I can get a card from him. And would I also talk to Todd about engineering regarding like sidewalks and?
Engineering's underneath planning.
Okay, that's Todd as well. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
His email address, if you want to send him an email. Kind of a joke, I give it out so often, right? T. Evans. And then spell it all out, fountaincolorado.org.
Okay. And he'll have it as well if you catch him right, right outside the.
Okay, thank you. Is that it tonight? Okay. All righty, we have John Langley from American Legion. Is this a friendly competition to see if you can keep up with V F W?
Well, I gotta really get down like this, but Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity that you give us to come up here and let y'all know about what we do. I just want to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing in the last month and what we got going on in the near future. Thank you to Fountain Up for allowing us to have a booth at the Field of Drinks. A lot of people did not know that the American Legion was back over there by, on Southmore. And then I talked to Scott just a minute ago about seeing what I need to do or who I need to start talking to about getting a, I need to do or who I need to start talking to about getting a sign. And a pointer over that way so that people will actually know that we're there because they see that they go into the housing and they're like, we're not in the right place. The American Legion donated five hundred dollars recently to our auxiliary, which is in cahoots with Colorado Springs, I Love You for the Backpack Bash. And so that's getting a lot of backpacks for them. We also were able to donate two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to the American Legion Legacy Fund. And if you don't know what that is, bikers from all over the, the state converged here in Colorado, or in Colorado Springs. And they donated over twenty-five thousand dollars to the Legacy Fund. What the Legacy Fund does is it provides scholarships to fallen soldiers at post-nine-eleven, firefighters and police officers to their children for them to be able to go to college. And I would like to beat the drum for our auxiliary at the annual convention in Ignacio for the American Legion. They almost won every single award that there was to win for the auxiliary. And so those ladies and, and a few gentlemen are doing some really great things in our organization. This Friday, we have the auxiliary is doing their Chicken Fried Chicken again. This Saturday, we have the, what we call the thirty-eight special. It's a poker run. So our A L R, our Legion Riders will be going to Bishop's Castle, to Florence, and then back into our, our post to finish up there. And that's where they do most of their fundraising for the year. And so if you start getting complaints about loud motorcycles going down Southmore, it's only gonna last for about five hours. Next Friday, we have the A L R Steak Dinner that will be being served. And our auxiliary is wrapping up their backpack collection next week. So if any members from the community would like to be, to drop off backpacks for the Backpack Bash, I believe the local place that we're gonna be donating them is at Grand Mountain. I don't know if they have one planned in Fountain itself. But their plan is to try to get twelve thousand backpacks out to students and youngsters in the community that might not be able to afford them otherwise.
And there, yeah, there is a Backpack Bash at D eight.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that is it, unless y'all have any questions.
No, I just, you guys are just having a good competition in who's providing the most activities down here. It's, it's wonderful to have, have both of you guys.
Well, it's not a competition.
And doing so much for our community. And so thank you very much.
We're just trying to get out there and let people know that we're there to help them and to support veterans and the youth of the, the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and my last card tonight is from Mr. Linder and he wanted to touch on several things. Glad to see you're feeling better, Mr. Linder.
Say what?
I'm glad to see you're feeling better.
Oh, hi, thank you. Well, I wanted to start off with Johnny Rowe. Very sad day, but went good, did it? Boy, fifteen years, a Fountain Police Officer. Twenty-something years, an Army Staff Sergeant. Worked at Fort Carson Hospital. Retired. Passed away. He was one of the group, remember, with Jim Coke, Johnny Rowe, myself, Larry Holtz. Now Jim is gone. And Johnny Rowe is gone. But it was really beautiful today. The Blue Knights, the Blue Knights are the retired police officers, their motorcycle club. And they gave me the honor as lead motorcycle. So anyways, thank you all. I was shocked to see the amount the Fire Department was there. Police Department was there. Patriot Guard was there. Everybody was there. Beautiful. Okay. Corey Applegate, unbelievable run. Dietrich Duncan, unbelievable. You know, I always said I'd like to have the county commissioner in our community. Well, we got a pick, you know. But Corey, you kicked butt, boy. I mean, they pushed that Delgado Miller, whoever she was. And you did it. Congratulations to the both of you. And that's all I have to say. So thank you. Thank the V F W for sponsoring the meal for Johnny Rowe's family.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have tonight, unless you got any else, more handed in? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, that takes us on to item seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed in our Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. We have items seven A and seven B. What would council like to do with that? Councilmember Applegate.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Councilmember Hanton.
I second.
Here we have a motion and a second for the Consent Agenda. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven, yes, motion carry.
Okay, and the, one of the things under Consent Agenda was appointing Joni Carneal as our new city clerk. Congratulations. And if we can have a moment of indulgence, I'm going to go down front and we will actually swear her in. So hopefully somebody else can run your little spot over there for a minute. In Fountain, Colorado.
Fountain, Colorado.
Upon which?
Upon which?
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Best of my skill and ability.
Congratulations.
Mayor, if I could just take a second as you're getting situated. Joni continues a long line of really good city clerks that we've had over the years. This community's been really blessed with some good folks sitting in that role. And we're also blessed that Joni's been here for what, sixteen years? Fifteen years, fifteen years now. And learning that role along the way and just doing a phenomenal job. I couldn't be more excited to be able to work with Joni officially in the role. So thanks, Joni.
Congratulations, and it's probably been about twenty-some years before, since a mayor's had to do that, huh? So pretty cool.
Twenty-five, to be exact.
Thank you very much. All righty, it takes us on to item eight, Old Business. There is none. Item nine, New Business, nine A. Items removed from the Consent Agenda. There were none. Item nine B, Public Hearing and Resolution. So I'm opening a public hearing and resolution of twenty-four dash zero-two-six, a resolution of the Fountain City Council approving a modification of the South Academy Highlands Urban Renewal Plan. Ms. Bailey.
Evening, Mayor, council and public. I had to wait for Joni's procession to leave, so.
I was like, there was half the audience.
I know. A little delay getting to the podium, but I, I made it, so that's great. Appreciate the time this evening to talk about the South Academy Highlands District. Kimberly Bailey, Executive Director for the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority. The public hearing is open, but I think there's a short presentation we'd like to provide just to address any upfront questions regarding the recommendation being put forth. And so we do have a succession of items, action items beyond the public hearing. And those are all based on state statute that govern Urban Renewal Authority in the local jurisdiction as it's adopted. Next slide, please. And so before we get into the depth of the South Academy Highlands, I think it's important to understand what is Urban Renewal. And so under state statute, it actually has to be formulated and adopted at the local level to address areas of blight, areas of need of revitalization, and therefore the, I can't read sideways, my apologies. The heightened cost that adds on to public services because of those conditions that may exist within a local municipality, right? P D responses, violent offenses that's going on in harboring assets in a community, things like that that go on when assets are left awry, right? And/or if those assets are unaccessible to promote new economies, new economic development initiatives for a community long term. Today, we have four Urban Renewal Districts established. And those are identified in the base map that you see to your right. The one we are here talking about this evening is the South Academy Highlands, which is at the very north point off of South Academy Boulevard. If you're familiar with the Sam's Club or the Walmart and that jurisdiction across from the Community College, then that is the general area we are presenting to you tonight. The original district that was established is the one in Burgundy and that is the U S eighty-five Urban Renewal Area. That one was adopted in two thousand and eight. And then each of those four areas have come online through numerous councils that have sat at this bench. And every time, each time an Urban Renewal is established, it begins a new twenty-five-year clock cycle under state statute. And so what is the effective purpose of Urban Renewal? Besides what the statute said that I introduced you with, it defines that we may engage in tax sharing agreements. Those tax sharing agreements can be put towards funding for infrastructure, for capital improvements. Blight remediation is always our ultimate goal under Urban Renewal. And then as well as, it does shelter and harbor those new revenues coming from commercial assets under Tabor. So it actually exempts those revenues from Tabor. And we are able to use those dollars at the municipality level more effectively, therefore. Next slide, please. So South Academy Highlands, again, at that very northern point. Under the master plan that was established in two thousand and fourteen, all three areas shaded were included in that master plan, okay? Under that master plan, the green area is the only one that was put towards the bond debt. So at the time, in two thousand and fourteen, the bond debt issuance was about forty-two million. And that forty-two million went through topography, infrastructure, build out to allow all that new retail and commerce to happen and provide new services for our community. The blue area and the yellow area are in the master plan, but they are unobligated to the bond debt, if that makes sense, okay? So even though a blue area may develop under the financial instrument of bonds, you just can't take new revenue and pay down bond debt. That's not how financial instruments work. Financial instruments are by pledge of revenue. The council at the time of two thousand and fourteen worked with Urban Renewal and pledged only the green area of the master plan. So what we have before you tonight is recommending a modification to the master plan to exempt the blue and the yellow areas out and then formulate a new secondary South Academy Highlands Two Urban Renewal jurisdiction that sets a new clock of twenty-five years to at least provide a means to capture that new economic revenue proposal coming into the community and then working collaboratively with the city to steward those dollars on behalf of the three measures I've already outlined for you. With that said, the bones of the master plan stays in place. The pledges and agreements of the master plans do stay in place, but those, those agreements have to be duplicated for Phase Two establishment, okay? With that said, right now, again, I'm reading sidelines. Master plan was only and is only pledging South Academy Highlands local sales tax dollars. It is not asking to capture other entities' revenues, property taxes, external sales tax dollars that go elsewhere, et cetera, et cetera. So with that said, because we're keeping the main bones of the original master plan, we do not have to ask for approvals to move through this process with those external agencies, okay? In addition, the master plan was established based on bond debt financing. South Academy Two is being recommended as establishment as purely a cash flow. We are not looking to go out to a financial instrument debt obligation. That is not our intent. Our intent through this process is to identify those new revenues that are being proposed through new development, be able to retain those dollars as the cash flows are derived, and then apply those revenues to collaborative cooperative programs among the city and the Urban Renewal Authority. Those programs could be consist of, again, addressing blight remediation anywhere in the. the city jurisdiction, addressing insufficient infrastructure that's impeding development to progress. So the dollars will be put towards capital improvements and/or infrastructure and/or roadways and/or blight remediation measures, is the purpose of the Phase Two area. And then with that, I would say, I'm seeing down at the bottom there, philosophically, based on the proposal that is now moving through planning under the South Academy II's new development site plan, overall, 25-year clock, new revenues purely sales tax-based, city portion is about $7 million. And those $7 million is a conservative analysis of what those pads could bill out to be, and that would be the monies that we would be able to retain exempt from Tabor, and we would be able to use those through those other mechanisms I identified of how we would apply those dollars. Next slide, please. So, we're working on a timeline, and the timeline is dictated by state statute. We're working towards the end of the timeline, and we work backwards. So we are trying to meet a date of August as to when a land transaction will happen in that upper blue zone for the master anchor tenant to come in. And based on that, we have to work on state statute timelines, 30-day notification, 60-day notification. We are here tonight because of the 30-day notification of a public hearing, and we want to make sure that the public has an option to be heard during this recommendation that the urban renewal is putting forth with the city. So in May, the Urban Renewal Authority executed its resolution to make a recommendation motion action in play. As of the end of May, we notified El Paso County. Because the blue and the yellow zone equate to about 38 acres in totality, that is a massive change to the existing master plan land use area, and we have to provide a courtesy notice to the county. The county does not need to respond. The county cannot impede the process because we are not asking them to pledge their revenues out of this new Phase Two area. And actually, as of today, we got our notice from the county that they have no objection and that they are in full support of this program going forward. The other step that also needed to take place is we did need to present to Planning Commission that did transpire in June, and in your packet of materials tonight, under the resolution materials, there is a recommendation by El Paso, by your Planning Commission, to move forward with the recommendation that has been proposed by urban renewal. And then tonight, we are here with you for the public hearing process and the succession of steps that may transpire thereafter. Next slide, please. So I will pause at this point, have the public come up, address any questions that anybody may have in the audience this evening, before we move through the action items as outlined.
Okay, thank you, I want to make sure you weren't just pausing.
We are.
Well, you're done with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, are there any questions from council up here? Councilmember Applegate.
One of the years up there said 2044, but you had said 25-year deal.
Correct.
That 25-year deal would go to 2049, correct?
So, that date stamp that I had in that upper marker was delineating the actual time span of the original bond issuance. So that bond issuance for only the green area of South Academy has a lifeblood till 2044, till those bonds are paid in full.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so what we are trying to articulate is that what we're recommending isn't screwing with the bond obligation, right? It's just detecting that there is still a life cycle left in that bond payout, and we're just clarifying that this is not going to impede that process.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your only question?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, this is a public hearing, so are there any questions or comments from anybody in the public? Okay, is there anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so I'll bring it back up to the dais, thank you very much, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. So, as I said, there is a succession of steps that have to happen per state statute. So first is the public hearing, which you may close out that public hearing process officially by the city clerk, I think at this point, if we would like to. And then next would be the actions of the subsequent nine C and nine B on your agenda, which are executing the resolutions put forth.
Okay, I just wanted to wait to make sure we were really done with the public...
I understand.
...part of it, so, okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on item number 24 dash 026, and what would council like to do with this? Did I not read the correct number?
Yes, so this resolution is the first step, which is modifying the master plan.
Correct, yes. Okay, councilmember Rick.
Move to approve Resolution 24 dash 026.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further deliberation? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion, Carrie.
Thank you. So your next resolution is 24 dash 027. This resolution is understanding that the legislative findings that are presented to you in the plan, in the condition survey, are equivalent to the state statute and approving the recommendation put forth to establish the second South Academy Highlands district.
Okay, so that takes us on to item nine C, Resolution 24 dash 027, a resolution of the Fountain City Council making certain legislative findings on approving the South Academy Highlands II Urban Renewal Plan. And so, you have a whole 10 minutes.
For...
For this, they gave you 10 minutes for this.
Joni was generous, but I think we can keep it to five.
Okay, is there any questions or comments from anybody in the audience on item nine C? All right, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? And I can't tell who, with the screen on, I can't tell who puts in first, so councilmember Hersberg?
I move to approve Resolution 24 dash 027.
Okay, councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Resolution 24 dash 027, is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion, Carrie.
Thank you. And so your final act is Resolution 24 dash 028, with a resolution approving the tandem sales tax sharing agreement, I mean, sorry, the use tax sharing agreement, as well as the sales tax cooperation agreement, which are originating from the master plan but also have to be applied to the new plan area. And that is what this motion is recommending.
Okay, that takes us on to item nine D, Resolution 24 dash 028, a resolution approving the use tax sharing and the sales tax sharing cooperations agreement with the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority for pertaining to the South Academy Highlands II Urban Renewal Plan. Did you have anything else to say?
No, Mayor.
Here are any questions from anybody up here in the council? Any questions or comments for anybody in the audience? Okay, what would council like to do with this?
There's a question.
Oh, oh, please, thank you. Please come down, Mr. Couch.
My question would be, I understood in the beginning that, that sales tax was not being collected on the properties that were in the first section. How does this affect, and what are the percentages of how this affects what goes to the urban renewal and what goes to Fountain in the, in the agreement for the additional properties?
Sure.
You can answer it, I just want to know.
Yeah, glad to answer that for you. So, under the master plan, the use tax and sales tax actually were 100% pledged to the urban renewal authority. So the sales tax is generated within the original area, which was and is the green mass area, and all that flows through the urban renewal authority and is paid to the bond debt issuance. So we do not keep or retain any of that. The city of Fountain does keep a portion of that original sales tax base, though, already. In the Phase Two, it will be the same structure, 100% of the use tax and the sales taxes generated is applied to the urban renewal authority, but in the Phase Two proceedings, we are not passing through that revenue to bond debt. It actually creates cash flow revenue for the urban renewal and the city to utilize instantaneously. Does that make sense? Okay.
Good question, thank you very much. Anybody else? Do we have any questions online? Okay, I think we have a question up here, councilmember Rick?
Yes, just quickly, Kimberly, the money that this Phase Two is going to generate, that's going to maintain the roads up in South Academy Highland, is that correct?
You are correct. So by supporting this initiative, what we're doing is relieving some stress on the streets and transportation side, to be obligated to appropriate funds for the long-term maintenance of Venetucci Road. This solves that conundrum for the city.
Thank you.
We're not responsible for the academy, though. We're not responsible for B Street, just that section that goes through...
You are correct, just the yellow line that you saw on that graphic, that is strictly the Venetucci responsibility roadway.
Not potholes inside the parking lot.
That is correct, that is private development responsibility, just like at your Safeway Center or anywhere else.
Right, okay.
Mayor, just to make sure, I get this question as well, Darrell, I think, has heard it as well, but urban renewal or the development right now has been paying for all the improvements and maintenance that we need to do up there currently. So it's something that has been self-sufficient, and with this, as Kimberly stated to Mr. Rick's question, will continue to be self-sufficient, so we won't be pulling from the city to pay for those maintenance needs up there for the streets.
Councilmember Duncan?
Okay, I don't know how to really, so you just answered Mayor Pro Tem Rick's question about the roads, so within relationship to PPRTA, are we paying more with this addition or not? Is it the same?
It's the same. And it's not we that pay it, it's anybody that shops as a consumer at those storefronts would pay that 1%.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. But that road is in PPRTA, so if we were a member of PPRT, we, we could apply to use maintenance dollars for that road instead of our dollars, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, last chance. All right, what would council like to do with this item? Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 24 dash 028.
Councilmember Duncan? Oh, she went off and, okay, councilmember Rick, okay.
Second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion, Carrie.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, and that takes us on to item nine E, a public hearing on resolution I'm going to give, oh, Kristy, are you moving or staying there?
I'm going to stay.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it then, since you're staying there, okay. I'm going to open a public hearing and Resolution 24 dash 025, a request for conditional use approval to permit an expansion of the Clear Springs Ranch gravel pit, generally located northwest of Interstate 25 and Ray Nixon Road, and here, herein after described as Exhibit A and B. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening, Kristy Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. As was mentioned in opening the public hearing, this is consideration of the expansion of the Clear Springs Ranch gravel pit. It's located along the west side of I-25 north of Ray Nixon Road. So the highlighted parcel in green on the aerial map identifies the parcel in question. This parcel is owned by the Colorado Springs Utilities, also known as CSU for reference as I go through the presentation. They have existing mining operations in the parcel directly south. They are expanding into the parcel that happens to be located within the city of Fountain. The expansion area is approximately 100 acres, however, the mining operation's only about 42 acres. Mining operations are not outlined within our zoning ordinance, but just by the nature of it, in the zoning classification of the planned industrial of the parcel, it is an appropriate zone district. CSU does anticipate this mining operation in the expansion area to commence within the third and fourth quarter of 2024, and will expand continuing operations for approximately 30 to 40 years. From a visual standpoint, from I-25, you're not able to see visually the mining operations. There is an existing corridor of a no disturbance area, in addition to some grade separations between the highway and the mining operations. So even in the expansion area, you're not going to be able to see that. So the aerial that's shown on the right-hand side of the screen is looking west from I-25 as you head southbound into the general vicinity of the expansion area. So the parcel that is highlighted in this bold black line is the 100-acre parcel that's being considered. However, the mining expansion area is within those 42 acres of the smaller red boundary outline. And then again, to the south is the existing gravel pit. Staff finds that the request is substantially consistent with the review criteria outlined in Section 172630 of the Fountain Municipal Code. And in consulting with the city attorney's office, because the Fountain Municipal Code is mute on any type of mining operations, we did defer to the El Paso County Land Development Code that does see more mining operations. So some of those were so included within this review criteria. Based upon the request, staff does feel that the responses and the justifications provided by the applicant were sufficient. Public notice was provided to this public hearing, it was posted on the property, public notices were mailed to all property owners within 400 feet, in addition to a public notice being published within the Gazette. This item was presented at the June 2024 Planning Commission meeting, at which time the commission did make a favorable recommendation to move forward. Staff does not make recommendations on land use applications, however, should city council find that the request is consistent with the review criteria, we would not oppose approval of Resolution 24 025 to net. Are there any questions for staff? There are representation from the applicant as well, so if you have any specific questions for them, they can attend to the podium.
Okay, all righty, would you like to come to the podium and say anything? Okay, so you don't, I'm just going to say publicly, you're choosing not to come up because we need to have it recorded, so, okay, if we have any questions for you, just hop on up to that podium right there by you. Okay, councilmember Rick?
This is, could either be for Todd or Kristy. I know in that area generally, there's a fertilizer company that is looking to build and expand their operations in that area. At least I thought there was.
No, I'm not familiar with that, in that area.
Is there...
Ms. Rick, I don't believe so.
Is there any businesses who have interest in that area that this would affect them?
No, not that we're aware of.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
That property, Kristy, is probably in the, Todd, is probably in the gated-off area within the Ray Nixon Power Plant, is that correct? So there wouldn't...
We're getting head nods as well, so yes, we do, it is.
Yeah, so there wouldn't be any businesses except the ones in the plant, pretty much, that would be directly affected by that.
No, and, and literally, it's landlocked, they've got the only access to that, to that piece of property as well.
Okay, councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, my only question is actually for the developer, what are the health concerns for our residents here in Fountain, if any, if you know of that?
Should be the middle button on the mic stand there.
Oh, thank you, the green light's on, so I guess I'm good to go. I'm mayor council, my name is Vance Fussinger, I work for Wilson and Company, representing Colorado Springs Utilities. We don't believe there's any health concerns. The proposed action will just let CSU proceed with this mining of this property into new ground, and the operation essentially will stay the same. They don't plan to ramp up production or anything, same production rate, just a different piece of ground. And to the best of my knowledge, it's operated very well for the past, I think it was permitted originally in the 1990s, so I think they're doing a pretty good job up there.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Okay, I do have a question for you. Just out of curiosity, I think I saw when I was reading through the documents, I know on Highway 115 with the gravel pits and stuff that they have there, they have quite an issue with trucks driving out of the facility, and they're not necessarily stopping and sweeping off their bumpers and resulting in cracked windshields and damage to people's vehicles. Do you have that policy where they have to stop and take care of that before they exit the...
I have not read that specific safety policy, but CSU's got pretty extensive policies, and I'm pretty sure they've got that one covered.
Okay, just want to make sure for the citizens, because I do hear a lot of stories.
No, we've all experienced it, right?
Yeah, 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 so, we have enough trouble with another natural phenomenon around here with our windshields that we... here with our windshields that we don't need. Okay. Any other questions for him? Any questions from the audience? All right, seeing none. What would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hinton?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 24-025.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Resolution 24-025. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, that takes us on... Oh. Closing the public hearing. Okay, all righty. That takes us on to Resolution 24-029, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the ordering in 2024 of a new fire department vehicle to be delivered in 2025. Chief Graham?
Good evening again, mayor and council. What we have before you this evening is a request for approval of a resolution, very similar to resolutions that you've seen in the past. We've identified a vehicle that needs replaced in 2025. The ordering period for these vehicles opened the year prior, and so we're asking for approval to go ahead and order the vehicle that would be delivered next year and also paid for next year in next year's budget. If approved, we'll put it into the budget, which you will ultimately see and have to approve again. So this is just approval for ordering. This vehicle has actually been before you in the past for approval. It was approved, however, at the time, our estimates of cost, when I presented it to you, was lower than what it ended up being. And so in order to stay within budget, we opted to not order this vehicle until FY '25. So the cost is, we believe, will be about $60,000. We're asking for approval for up to $65,000, just so we don't get in a situation again where we're over budget. Also, in the FY '25 budget will be a request to actually outfit the vehicle, which is fancy terminology for putting all the radios, lights, equipment necessary to make this a command vehicle. We estimate that to be between $40,000 and $45,000 additional dollars. So this will be a high-dollar vehicle once it's done. That's pretty much in line with what it costs to outfit a command vehicle these days. I would estimate this vehicle would last, serve the fire department and the citizens for 10 to 15 years, if well-maintained and taken care of. And I certainly stand for any questions.
Okay, do you have any questions from any councilmembers? Councilmember Applegate?
How much was the increase again, roughly? Because we saw it before, right?
Yes, sir. So during that request, there was two vehicles. We were named to replace two vehicles, so the combined cost of both of them was more than what I had initially asked for to be approved. We're about $20,000 over the estimate. I think I had requested $140,000, and once it was all said and done, we were closer to $160,000 for both vehicles, if I remember right. Those numbers could be off a little bit, but we were about $20,000 over. So we just scrapped one of them, went ahead and purchased one of the two, and delayed this one until FY '25.
Well, it's signed tonight, so it doesn't go up again.
Sounds good to me.
Councilmember Rick?
A couple of questions. The vehicle that this is replacing, how old is it?
It's a 2019 Chevy Tahoe. This vehicle has been leased by the city for the last five years. It's coming up on the end of its lease. And going back to the meeting in September of 2023, when I first brought this item up, part of that request back then was also to purchase this existing Tahoe, once the lease was up, with the vision being that that would give the fire department a spare command vehicle, which we don't have. And so I'll give you an example. When the battalion chief vehicle has to go to the shop for repair and maintenance, they have to borrow either vehicle from me, which I don't mind doing, or a vehicle from one of the other admin staff. Well, those admin staff are on call as well for safety officer duties. So it just puts us in a situation where having a spare vehicle will be certainly advantageous. Last year, when that was approved to buy that vehicle, the estimate was it was going to cost us about $10,000 to buy that vehicle. Now, with the lease ending in October of this year, we've dialed that cost in to be about $7,500. And so it, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer to purchase that vehicle, especially at that cost, and give us a spare vehicle. So to answer your question directly, it's a 2019 Chevy Tahoe that this would be replacing.
Okay. And this one's for Shawna. Where are the funds coming for this? Is this going to take away money from our capital, public safety capital budget that we're going to need to build Fire Station Number Four?
Well, currently, this would just be set as part of the fiscal year '25 budget request, so it would just be out of the general fund budget unless we decide during those work sessions for the '25 budget to take it out of the public safety sales tax.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be any budget adjustment for fiscal year '24. Chief, my understanding is just asking for the, you know, the acceptance to order the vehicle, and then we would put it in the '25 budget.
Okay. That's all I had, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, so once, if approved and once ordered, what's the timeline that you will receive that vehicle?
If we order it now, the vehicles that we ordered during this timeframe last year showed up. I mean, you're just now receiving some of them. Yeah, just barely getting them.
They're just down the fleet now.
Yeah, so it could be up to a year, depending on what goes on with the manufacturers.
So once ordered, that price is stuck. We won't get an increased price within that year. We just-
Correct.
Purchase it. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from councilmembers? Any other questions or comments from anybody in the audience online? Okay, seeing none. What would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-029.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to Item 9G, a discussion of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, of the fiscal year FY 2023, excess revenue tabor refund. And before you begin, Shawna, because this might be a little lengthy discussion, let's go ahead and take a five-minute comfort break for everybody, since this might take a little bit longer, so.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
... estimates and projections, and then once we finalize the numbers with our auditors, that's where this calculation comes into play. So going forward, this becomes a discussion tonight with council as to which of the two options council has, would they like to pursue? The first one is to return the excess revenues back to the voters as a refund, or to request a ballot measure, taking something to the voters, asking to retain the excess revenue. So with that, I will open it up if there's any discussion or questions, and I know Scott may have some items as well.
Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I want to share just a couple of thoughts real quick. One of the things that the city has really tried hard to do over the years is ensure that when new development comes into town, they pay their way, so that we don't have our own taxpayers paying all the costs that are associated with development, everything that comes along with that. One of the reasons that, well, the reason that we're over the tabor limit is because with development, particularly with one large development that paid their full development fees last year of $1.7 million, that's what put us into the tabor refund bracket. So if you think about it, what we've essentially done is we've received $1.7 million in revenue from a developer for development costs. For example, transportation impact fees is a portion of that, and we're now going to have to refund $386,000 of that $1.7 million that was set aside, paid for developers, to take that burden off our taxpayers. I say that because I think it's important that we understand that that's what happens. That's one of the downsides of tabor. For the advantages of tabor and those that are supportive of that, because it, you know, creates some controls, right, on unlimited governmental revenue growth or whatever, that's one of the downsides, probably that it didn't anticipate a situation like that. And I also say that because there's a couple of things that... One of the reasons we're having this as a discussion item tonight is because in order for the council to make a decision to place something on the ballot this November, we'll need to have something to the council by our next council meeting. We, in the meantime, between now and then, there's a potential avenue that we may be able to pursue that might actually, because it's development funds, that might actually help us with this tabor thing. It might actually eliminate that tabor and allow us to keep it for the development purposes that it was given to the city for. But because of the timing on determining that this is a potential, we just needed to get it to the council so that we could at least get this in front of you for informational purposes, so that you guys could decide. If the council, if it turns out that we can't do, we can't take actions that would allow us to retain that because it's development-related funds, then those are the two options that you have, and we'll be obviously really, you know, ready to talk about, to take action at the next council meeting when that time hits. Is that just a brief overview? I just wanted to add that in as well.
But it would only become a potential ballot measure, A, if this first part doesn't work out where you might be able to keep it.
Correct.
Okay. And then, B, if we decided to refund it to the citizens-
Yep.
-through what we have done in 2010, I believe, was a utility tax credit-
Correct.
Then that wouldn't have to go to the ballot, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
This would only go to the ballot if we ask the citizens to keep that potential money that we're not sure we might have or not, the $386,000. dollars, and, and ask them to do something as a community with it.
Yep, that's right.
Is that, is that a correct summary?
And you would want to determine something very specific that the community might want. Could be park projects, could be, whatever that might be, whatever the council discusses and determines that it would be appropriate to ask the community for.
Okay, and can I have my screen back, because I don't know who's, thank you. Okay, councilmember Rick?
Shawna, I'm assuming we've got some kind of idea of what two thousand and twenty-three's final numbers are to do this. What was our ending reserve amount at the end of two thousand and twenty-three?
You know, I don't have that handy with me, but I can definitely get that for you if I can send it to you tomorrow. I don't have that with me.
Do you have a ballpark figure?
I don't want to guess.
I'll just say, I, based off of two thousand and twenty-five projections that you did a couple of meetings ago and showed us, we've got a reserve of about thirteen-plus million dollars. And I think it, I think it's hypocritical for us to ask to keep three hundred thousand when we've already got thirteen million in reserve. And it would be my suggestion that we refund it rather than keep it, but that's just me.
Councilmember Hinton?
So, along those lines of what Council Mayor Pro Tem Rick was talking about, if, so there's different scenarios here, Scott, and I just kind of want to run through it just so the public kind of has an understanding. If we were to, to ask to, to keep those funds, what kind of, and I know it's kind of a council discussion, discussion, but what is something that, a project that would, you know, really benefit the mass of the city have found? What is something that, would that look like?
Well, I, I think the council, and we could certainly provide a list with some, with some estimated costs, but I think the council could explore things like, we have a need to completely build new playgrounds in several parks. We have some costs associated with that. That would be the kind of thing that these funds would provide, some funds for parks to build those parks, or two parks to build those playground, that playground equipment, and to completely rehab those in three different parks that we have, things like that. We have road improvements. We have, for example, the intersection of Ohio and Jimmy Camp is one example. You're going to want to do something where the community can kind of get behind.
They'll, for sure.
We have the Aga concession, you know, the bathroom and concession, that, that bathroom needs to be redone and has got to be redone for years. It's just been budgetarily out of our reach. That would be the kind of thing that you might ask the community for. That's what we did. In fact, that was our last request for the Metcalf. Right now, where we have the Metcalf bathroom and concession stands, that was the last time we went to the voters to ask them to allow us to keep the funds for that facility, and the voters said yes.
Yeah.
I think it's those kind of things.
Yeah, for sure.
That would be.
For sure. And Shawna, this question for you. So what would the break, give or take, and I, I know you don't like to estimate, but if we, if, if it was to give a refund back to a citizen, what, what would that look like? What, what number would that look like?
So that's where we went through, and we did the calculation based on the utility accounts, the residential utility accounts within city limits, and it would be a credit on their utility bill of about thirty-six dollars.
Okay, so I haven't, I haven't made up my mind either way to go, but I think that, for me, the benefit would be more in, in a big, large project to utilize that money for, so everybody can benefit from it versus maybe giving a, the refund back to the citizen. But I still, I'm, I'm, more information needed for me to make more of a educated decision here, but, you know, I'm, I'm leaning towards, towards that if I.
Certainly, and we, and our big thing tonight was just making sure that the council was aware.
Yeah.
Basically, as soon as we found out, so we could get it to you and, and get you thinking about that, and giving us some direction if we, not that you have to know tonight, hey, we're going to do it or not.
For sure.
But, look, if we want to put it on the agenda so we can have the discussion, and then the council could take action one way or the other, then that will help us, that will give us the direction for the next council meeting.
Yeah, and I don't like keeping, I don't want to keep citizens, obviously, it has to go to ballot, and I want the citizens to make that determination, you know, if they want to receive that refund or utilize that money for, for the city in total, so, yeah.
You know, one of the things if I could add, sorry, Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify Shawna's statement a little bit better, because I think you said it kind of softly. It's thirty-six dollars per utility account, not per person.
Correct.
Okay, I don't want people with six kids to yell excited. I know, but, and residential, residential, not, thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, residential, residential utility accounts within city limits.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, because somebody's got six kids, they're going to go, ooh, thirty-six times eight people, you know, and it's not. It's thirty-six dollars per residential household within the city limits of Fountain, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry if you live in Security or Widefield and use our electricity, it's, okay. Councilmember Hersberg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had a few questions, Shawna. So, first of all, if it goes to ballot, what's the cost? Because I know that ballot measures can be a little expensive, so what would it cost us to, for it to go to ballot? That's my first question.
That, actually, I don't know. Joanie?
Are you going to say something?
The cost of the election is dependent upon how many participants are in the election, so we wouldn't know that until we got an IGA back from the county.
And since this is a general election year, it would probably be lower than a, an, kind of an off-year, yeah.
Yeah, what'll happen after that second meeting, that's the county, that's them giving us a deadline to get the information, that same deadline hits all the different political jurisdictions in the county, and so as the word comes in from all of them, who's going to participate, then it gets divvied out.
Okay, do you know, like, a ballpark of, like?
You're probably going to be under, hmm, fifteen to twenty thousand, I would guess. And that's based on guestimates from past numbers, but it really depends on how many people.
Okay.
Or how many entities participate.
And then, if there was a particular project that was decided upon, does that then become restricted funds just for that project?
Yes.
And then, is there a timeline where it has to be spent by, or do we have the leisure of time on completion of the project?
Actually, that's a great question that.
That, that question came up before.
Yeah.
And there wasn't a time commitment, it was just that project was committed, and so we, we did it immediately. Yep.
Okay, any other questions from council members? Scott?
This is just one more, this is a philosophical comment about Mayor Pro Tem Rick's comment. I think it's, I think that's, that was a really important comment to make, observation, really, when it comes to our reserve fund balances. We have a specific amount that this council has set as a threshold to set aside for some sort of emergency that happens, right? But it also is an amount that's set aside if there is some opportunity that comes up, if there are, if there's a capital project, if there's a grant match, all those kind of things that gives you some, some capital to help you out with those projects. And I do think it's really important, as the council has these sorts of decision points, and that's why I think this data that we'll get will be valuable, that you really shouldn't be holding on to the taxpayers' dollars. We should be using that for the taxpayers, which, you know, if, again, depending on which direction the council takes with something like this, would ensure that those funds get used for a, a, the citizen needs as well directly, not being used in, you know, the big black hole of general government. But I do think it's just, it's wisdom, not just for this issue now, but as we're looking at our budgets and moving forward, that we really do try to make sure that those dollars aren't just getting hoarded, that they're actually getting used for projects that our community really needs. And I'm not talking about the three hundred and eighty-six thousand, I'm talking about the larger reserve balance or fund balance.
Councilmember Rick?
Yeah, based off of what Shawna presented for the two thousand and twenty-five budget, we as a, our previous councils have said that we need to keep a twenty percent reserve. That comes out to six-point-something million dollars. In addition to that twenty percent, in addition to that six-point-nine, or whatever the number is, we have another twenty percent and another six-point-whatever million dollars in reserve. I think, this is me personally speaking for myself, and I've, I've asked that staff look at, taking some of that second six million dollars, that second twenty percent, and say, what can we do with, say, two to three million of that to provide things for the residents?
Okay, but can we stick to the, what we have here, you know, just this tonight?
I just want to expand upon Scott's point about we shouldn't keep too high of a revenue reserve.
I appreciate that, yeah, thank you. Councilmember Hersberg?
Yes, thank you, sorry. So if it was decided to refund it, how quickly would that happen? How quickly would they see that credit?
We would have to work with the utilities and their billing software, because we have to make sure that the GL account numbers that need to be tied to that on the backend for the accounting piece of it are built into their software, and then we would have to work with them to get all of that actually applied. So it would still take probably at least a couple of months to get it through, so it wouldn't be until probably the fourth quarter of this year at the very earliest.
Councilmember Duncan?
Sorry, you wanted to know where each of, where we each stand, whether we want to do a ballot measure or, or to?
I, I think for our, for our standpoint, the main thing was to get you the information, and then to get direction back from you, not whether you want to put it on the ballot or not, but do you want us to bring it up to the next council meeting for a, more a formal action? At that point, then you can decide, we'll have more information between now and then, and then that'll give you more information, you can make that decision in a more informed way.
Right.
Because it's pretty tough for you to make a decision tonight in any sort of informed way. Just need to get the information to you.
Right, because I'd like to know, as you stated, as to where, if this could be, because it was a road improvement where, I mean, not road improvement, because it was tied to.
Developer fees.
A developer, yes. I'd like to know that information before I said anything about that.
Sure.
Councilmember Hinton?
So this mess, this question's for Shawna. So what would it, how much would it cost the city to, if we were to refund this back? What cost is it for the city to refund these Tabor funds back?
That's hard to estimate, because it just comes down to staff time.
Yeah.
Realistically, there's not an actual, I can't give you a physical cost, it would just depend on how much time is involved and how many staff members are involved.
Okay.
But it would definitely be cheaper than trying to mail out checks, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and, and just to, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of hammer on this point, because when we've had these discussions in the past about it being refunded to the utility account, if you are a renter, if the utility's in your name, then it's refunded to you. If you're a renter and the utilities is not in your name, it's, it's refunded to the person whose account the name is in. And I think we need to make sure that people understand that right up front, because that may or may not help the decision. I'd really love to, I'm hoping this is going to get out on social media, and not just go on social media, because we don't need your opinions on social media, we need you to email us, right? We need you to email your opinion to us, and Todd, I hate to say it, but three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars you could use up in about thirty seconds somewhere, I'm sure. So, yeah, yeah, and, and it's not going to do, or not going to redo a mile of road. I think we're up to one point two-five million per mile, so we're doing about, what, two-hundred feet of a road? So that's in front of your house, that would be nice for you, but, okay. And I, that's just, that's just, and that's a tough thing, the way they cost, so what I'm kind of hearing is, we're having a discussion, next council meeting, we want to have it brought back. I think we want to have some potential ideas, and we're hoping some citizens will give us some potential ideas on what they, on what they, because three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in the, in the, in the municipal world goes pretty fast, because we have to buy really, really good playground equipment that's going to stand the test of time. So, I mean, if that, I'm just using that as an example, so. Is that what you needed, Shawna? Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
But we pretty much have to make a decision next council meeting if it's going on the ballot or not.
At least so that we can then let the county know, yes, it'll be.
And we can change, we don't have to pay any money at that point.
No.
We can change our mind.
Right, correct.
All right. Not making a decision tonight, we're just, it's just information tonight. Councilmember Applegate?
One last thing, when will we have more concrete numbers on everything? Like, how, like, how soon? How soon could you have that?
Are you talking like the end of the year, final audited numbers from two thousand and twenty-three?
Right, and exactly, like this amount, is this, is this exact, like, exactly, we've got this in the bag?
For the Tabor refund, yes.
Okay.
Now, by next council meeting, if not before, I will definitely have updated fund balance projections for Mayor Pro Tem Rick.
Okay.
And, and Scott, when do you think you might have the answer if, I mean, this is potentially money we are talking about tonight that might be, stay with the city?
We have phone calls into the auditor.
Okay.
It's just really an auditor question if they, if they approve.
I left a voicemail for our auditors this afternoon, and also sent them an email, so hopefully I can get ahold of them by the end of this week.
Okay, all righty, so by next week, it might be a mute point, right? And you'll let us know that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Sharon, just one thing.
Oh, Councilmember Duncan, thank you.
I just would like to have the ending reserve also, probably if you can just send it to all of us, that'd be a good thing, okay?
Yep, just send it to all of us, and that way you're not getting five more emails, huh? All right.
Not a problem.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, Joanie? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over item ten. Do we have any city council agenda requests? Okay, there's none?
In accordance with the city charter and the Colorado Upon Meetings Act, the city council open session is to determine whether it will hold a closed executive session. A closed executive session may be held upon an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present. If consent to the closed executive session is not given, the items may be discussed in open session or withdrawn from the consideration. The purpose of tonight's executive session is pursuant to CRS Section two-four dash six dash four oh two four for the purpose of review, approval, and amendment of executive session minutes, and CRS Sections two-four, six, four oh two, four F for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of the body of an elected official or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees for executive evaluation.
We have a request from our city clerk to go into executive session, what we council like to do. Councilmember Rick?
Move we go into executive session?
Councilmember Duncan?
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.